Good evening and welcome. This is September the 25th, 2023 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. At event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in the front corner of this building. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the doors to my right by pulling the car alarm located to the right of the door under the monitor. Please let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we are asked that everyone please stand and please silence your cell phones. And I have one more message. If you plan to attend during the public comments period, at the end of this meeting, please fill out a form on the table near the door that you came in and give it to the city clerk. Thank you. Who would please stand for the class?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to invite Pastor Greg Morris of the Parkway Church of God Forward to provide the city indication.
Thank you again for the opportunity to represent people of faith as we call upon God. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening at the beginning of this meeting to recognize that you are our benefactor. It is because of your righteousness that we are able to say that you have enabled our successes. We're reminded in the Gospels that without you, we can do nothing, but with you, all things are possible. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace that has been offered to us when we needed it most. We're amazed that your true justice, we have not received due penalty for our sin and our lack of repentance. The dysfunctions of our society as a result of our disobedience have caused the work of our city fathers, our city leaders, mothers to be more challenging. And for that reason, we pray that amidst the difficulties that we face, that you would provide wisdom, foresight, insight, and intelligence to the guidance of these business sessions before this house, both now and in the future. We want our city to stand and we ask that it would stand strong, much like the house that was built on the firm foundation that Jesus mentioned in the Gospel, Matthew, Chapter seven. No matter what the storm would come or what wind would blow, that house would stand firm. So grant that those who lead, guide, and direct our city's business would do so out of a biblical worldview. I love these men. I love these women. I love this city. And I pray God, through integrity, honesty, justice, peace, and love, would be our continuing guidepost as these sessions are led. And may we never forget that we should not put any other gods before us. May Salisbury, the surrounding townships, live in and under your influence and your favor, and in so doing, bring you glory to all that we do. And may our hearts soar with excitement as we see your handiwork among us. We bring these requests before you in the name of our heavenly Father, His Son Jesus, and His Spirit. Amen and amen.
Pastor Morris, could I have a motion to adopt the legislative agenda and a second?
Second.
Who said Angela?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second as well?
Second.
Good evening, council. On the consent agenda this evening, we have several minutes. We have the July 17th, 2023 closed session minutes, the August 7th, 2023 closed session minutes, August 14th, 2023 council meeting minutes, and August 21st, 2023 work session minutes and closed session minutes.
All of those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. I need a motion and a second to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Never mind. Okay, good evening, everyone. How are you? We have two items this evening for award of bid. The first is item RFP A-23-108. This is for the off-site net aggregate metered solar system. We were at council, or I was at council a few weeks ago with the work session presentation. This is the award for that. So proposals were released on May 9th, 2023. They were opened on June 14th, 2023. We did get the three proposals that are noted in your packet. The presentation that we brought to you a few weeks ago was regarding that first one, Next Amp. So they were the most highly ranked vendor for this contract award. Next Amp is from Boston, Massachusetts, but both of the off-site locations, one is in Centerville, one is in Stockton. Just remember, it is for a 20-year term. The rate is listed in your packet per kilowatt hour. There's a 2% annual escalation. This is also discussed several weeks ago. And this will provide about 49% of the city's annual electricity needs. All right. Yep. The next item is...
Any questions or comments? None?
Great, thank you. The next item is ITB number 24-108. That's for the Salisbury Fire Department Portable Radios. This is for the Motorola APX 6000. It's the 700 slash 800 model. They're looking for a quantity of 25 of those purchased from Motorola Solutions. The total cost is $170,725.25 per municipal code 2.32.050.5. That's for non-competitive negotiation or sole source procurement. This can be utilized whenever the Director of Procurement determines that there's only one available source for the subject of a procurement contract and that he or she may award that contract without competition to that source. So in your packet this evening, I did put the sole source justification. We did receive discounted pricing pursuant to the Maryland State of Contract, excuse me, Maryland State of Maryland contract that's noted in your packet, which affords about a 28% discount on radio equipment and 23% on accessories.
Questions? All in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hold the public hearing. Ordinance number 2821, second reading to amend section 14-04120 of the Salisbury City Code to include a definition for clinic residential and amending 17-16-30 of the Salisbury City Code to add clinic residential to the category of uses permitted by a special exemption and the R-5A zoning district. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2821? So moved.
Second.
As you mentioned, Council President Jackson, this is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading. But what I will do, since we're here for public hearing, will be to highlight the changes to the code, and they are as follows. To chapter 17.160120, we are adding the definition of clinical residential, which means a place used for outpatient care, diagnosis, and treatment of sick, ailing, infirmed, and injured persons and those who are in need of medical or surgical attention but who are not provided with board or room nor kept overnight on the premises. Behavioral and mental health counseling, community wellness outreach, and education may also be provided. Medication-assisted treatment, known as MAT, for addiction is not permitted. And the other change will be adding to chapter 17.160.030 a new subsection F, and that will read as follows. Clinic residential in the R-5A District on a minimum lot of one acre in accordance with a comprehensive site plan as approved by the Planning Commission with the following. One, the requirements for medical and dental clinic and office in section 17.196.030 shall be used to determine parking space requirements. Two, screening from adjoining residential uses consisting of a fence five feet in height and a 20-foot wide landscaped area shall be included on the comprehensive site plan approved by the Planning Commission. And three, a signed plan shall be approved by Planning Commission in accordance with 17.216.120. And those are the two changes.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing, please stand and be sworn in by the city clerk. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? This is for the public hearing.
You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and the proof of the truth.
I will now open the public hearing.
For the record, my name is Mark Proctor. I'm the attorney for Title Health. I submitted this text amendment with the assistance of Becker Morgan and the city zoning staff. I think you're familiar with what the purpose and goal of this text amendment is. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. Should you have any questions about this text amendment, I have the Becker Morgan team here with me to answer any technical questions about this particular amendment, but otherwise, I don't intend to take up any more of your time this evening. So thank you.
Sharon DeSheal. I'd like to commend Title Health. What a phenomenal idea to use the old Hotel Esther for this. It's a location and everything. I just have one question. I don't know if it's too late. I think the more specific an ordinance is, the better, so as not to allow for interpretation. I would recommend the council identify the property as Hotel Esther on Church Street so that everyone is focused on that one particular piece of the ordinance. And by the way, thank you. No more dips on Russell Avenue.
Thank you. Thanks so much. No one else wants to speak for the public hearing? Okay? The public hearing is now closed. All in favor of ordinance number 2821 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
I have a question before we proceed. Go ahead. Would we consider, would we consider in this ordinance identifying the actual property to... Is that something we would consider or need to consider? Identifying this in this ordinance that this is the property, Hotel Esther on Church Street, before we vote this through? I don't know. It sounds like we've brought up for consideration.
I think you have more of a background on it. I assume this, is this to be more broadly addressed on this particular property?
For the record, this text amendment was for the Hotel Esther property. At the same time, it is a text amendment, so it's applicable in any zones or any areas of the city zone R-5A. So it's really not drafted to be site-specific. It shouldn't be interpreted as being site-specific. So with all due respect, I don't think a particular property should be identified in the text amendment. But yes, Hotel Esther is what this was intended for.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that all, Angela? Yes, ma'am, the president. All those in favor of ordinance number 2821 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2824 for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Call your names up, because I can't.
Megan and Michelle, second.
Okay, I got them.
ordinance number 2824, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Department of Field Operations Budget for increased overtime. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Are there any questions or comments? No? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number 2824 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. Okay, could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2825 for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Rocher.
Ordinance number 2825.
The city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland State Arts Council for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $17,846 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with a public art fund for the Arts and Entertainment District. Again, this one is also before you for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments.
Are there any questions or comments, council?
This is just phenomenal, and I'm excited to get this going.
Yeah, very exciting. And it's always great to get grant money.
Okay, so all those in favor of ordinance number 2825 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2826 for second reading? Ms. Rocher.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2826, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for a downtown ambassador program. This is also before you for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I just love this program. I think this is going to be, be a real help and asset to the downtown area.
Okay. None other? All those in favor of ordinance number 2826 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2827 for second reading?
So moved.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2827. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending chapter 5.69 of the Salisbury City Code to include exclusions from the paper carryout bag fee. This is before you for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Okay, are there any questions or comments, council? No? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number 2827 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Four to zero, and the chair votes aye. There you go. Jesus.
How many council members in here to figure out preschool coin?
Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2828 for second? For second reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2828, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Title Health for the purpose of accepting sub-granted funds in the amount of $85,012. As mentioned, this is before you for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Okay, any questions or comments? None. All those in favor of ordinance number 2828 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2829 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2829. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to update authorized position counts and grades. Whereas the city of Salisbury is updating authorized position counts and grades to match its needs in FY 2024. And whereas the city of Salisbury has determined no additional funding should be required to make the updates, and whereas the changes here must be made, or authorized position counts and grades must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2829 reads as follows. The city of Salisbury's FY 24 general fund budget B and hereby is amended to update the authorized position counts and grades as set forth below. Starting under the Housing and Community Development, the Housing and Homelessness Case Coordinator is set at a grade four and revised to one position count. The Field Operations Administration, or it, there is an Assets and Facility Manager as a grade M6. Currently, there's one revised to zero. Assistant Director, which is an M7 grade, current at zero, revised to one. Under Infrastructure and Development, a project engineer, one, two, three, or four, and those are at grades 14, 15, 16, 17. Currently, there's five, revised to zero. Project manager, engineer, one, two, three, four, at grades 14, 15, 16, 17. Currently, there are zero, revised to five. For Salisbury Zoo, Collection Operation Manager at a grade M2. Currently, there's one, reflected and revised to zero. Lead Keeper, grade M2, current zero, revised to one. And finally, under Parks and Rec, the General Maintenance Technician, a grade two. Current, there's one, revised to zero. Downtown Ambassador, grade two, current zero, revised to one.
Are there any questions or comments?
Now, the link we did here was just to bring everything up to date, correct?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 2829 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, vote is four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2830 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2830. This is an ordinance of the city authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for the Raw Waterline Naylor Mill Project. Whereas the city of Salisbury has determined an additional $276,255.84 is needed to complete the Raw Waterline Naylor Mill Project. And whereas the city has located $236,255.84 that is no longer needed for other city projects, which can be reallocated to the Raw Waterline Naylor Mill Project. And whereas an additional $40,000 is available from surplus to be transferred from the Water Sewer Fund as PEGO to the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund for the Raw Waterline Naylor Mill Project. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the appropriation of $276,255.84 to complete the Raw Waterline Naylor Mill Project as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of council. Section 1 of ordinance 2830 reads, Acting Mayor John R. Heath is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the Raw Waterline Naylor Mill Project in the amount of $276,255.84. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's FY 24 Water Sewer Fund Budget is hereby amended as follows. Increased expense for account description transfer water sewer capital projects, account number 91002-599108, in the amount of $40,000. Increased revenue for account description use of surplus, account number 60100-469810, by that same amount, which is $40,000. And section 3, the city of Salisbury's Water Sewer Capital Fund Budget B and hereby is amended as set forth on Schedule A, which is attached in your packet and was made public through the agenda.
Are there any questions or comments?
I just want to comment that I think it's a really good job on the city's part to be able to find money from other areas that aren't going to be, yeah. Very helpful. Thank you.
And just for clarification for the audience, this is to help meet some permitting requirements being set by Maryland Department of Environment, correct?
For both the things, we have the project that's on Naylor Mill Road right now. I'm having to update some of our infrastructure that was there.
Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 2830 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, vote is four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2831 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2831. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for the East Main Street Roundabout Project and the Lot 5 Compliance Project. Whereas the city of Salisbury has determined a traffic study is needed to determine the feasibility of a roundabout on East Main Street. And whereas the city of Salisbury has learned remedial work is required on Lot 5 due to the discovery of contaminants and subsurface anomalies. And whereas the city of Salisbury has determined that $28,056 will be required to complete the East Main Street Roundabout feasibility study, and $89,905.53 is required for the Lot 5 Compliance Project. Whereas funding for these two projects shall be provided by transferring $117,961.53 in PEGO funds from four projects that have funds no longer required, i.e., this is the City Park Phase 1, the Main Street Master Plan, the North Prong Park, and Riverfront Games Park. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the appropriation of $117,961.53 as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2831 reads as follows. Acting Mayor John R. Heath is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the East Main Street Roundabout feasibility study in the amount of $28,056 and the Lot 5 Compliance Project in the amount of $89,905.53. In section 2, the city of Salisbury's general capital project fund budget is amended as set forth in Schedule A, which is attached in your packet and also made public through the publication of the agenda.
Are there any questions or comments?
The roundabout can't get here soon enough.
I really, truly, that's...
I tried to walk from the birth of five building on 101 Long over to Burger Bros. the other day. It was a nightmare.
It's, it's, it's very difficult. So yeah, I'll be excited.
Nightmare.
I know a lot of my neighbors will be excited.
Okay, now, I'm reading in here lines 18, 19, and 20, and I need some clarification here. Funding for two projects shall be provided by transferring $117,961.53 in PEGO funds from four projects that have funds no longer required. So where's the funding from these other projects coming from? From the North Prong, the Riverfront Game Park, and the Main Street Master Plan.
The PEGO funding for those four projects are for projects that no longer need those funding. So it's similar to the Raw Waterline that we just did. We're reallocating funding from one project that nobody can all, that nobody needs that funding into this project, this type of, this is called PEGO. Maybe it's just the cash rather than like a bonded, um, project. So that's where we're going to transfer the money, that answer your question.
Not really. It didn't. Because, so you're saying to me that these projects are still going to be fulfilled. The North Prong, the Riverfront Game Park, and all that is still going to be fulfilled. I'm more interested right now in the North Prong because the North Prong has been sitting there for a number of years, and nothing's really been done. You've done some studies, but not enough. And it's an isolate to District 1. It's a complete eyesore, and I just feel as though something needs to be done. That whole Lake Street area is terrible. So what are we doing, I mean, I, I, I need to know, I really need to know, what are we doing?
We're still moving forward with that project, this funding amount, that was for this North Prong Park. Um, nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, we have millions of dollars to go to on our part. So we are still financing other parts of that, but the way that accounting pays for this specific allocation for our, our, that's funded, that needed for this specific, specific use, but we still have funding and a great company that we have in the other parts of the project, so.
So are you saying to me, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get in depth with you, because I'm truly concerned about this area. So you're pulling funds, are you pulling funds from this area to enhance the Main Street Roundabout? Is that what you're telling me? It's.
Kind of.
Um, I'm, 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 no, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I'm clarifying.
I'm talking to Andy. And I'm talk, I, I, I need to know, because I'm tired of money being pulled from everywhere to do everything else, but nothing going towards where it needs to be going to. I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm not sorry. I've, we've been dealing with this ever since I became a grown-up with that North Prong area. And I am tired of seeing it look like it looked, it's terrible. It's not only terrible for District One, it's terrible for the whole city. It's terrible, and we need to do something about it. Uh, the roundabout, I, I could, I, I don't have a problem with that, but what I have a problem with is us taking monies to um deal with other projects when you have projects that really need to be dealt with and haven't been dealt with for years. And they need to be dealt with, I'm just, I'm gonna say what I have to say, I'm just to its end with it, and I'm not trying to make anybody look bad, feel bad, or anything, but I'm just, you know, this project has been, when I first came on the council, it's been over eight years, I have spoke about this project. Chaney Shields has spoken about this project, and nothing seems to be done. And it seems like to me, because it's in a minority-majority neighborhood, that things are not being done, and I'm tired of it. You cannot keep neglecting things. You can't, and I'm sorry, I feel that way. I grew up in that area, I saw this area, I saw when they declined, something should have been done. As soon as it, that the business stopped, something should have been done, but no. It was neglected, and neglected, and neglected, and it's still being neglected. And I'm tired. I'm tired, and I know the people in that community are tired, because I know I'm tired, and I don't even live in that predominantly area, no, area no more, I live on the other side, but I ride through there. I have history there, I lived on Lake Street for years, grew up and was raised on Lake Street, raised my kids on Lake Street, worked for the owner of that company. I'm tired, when are we gonna do something about this? Somebody needs to dig in and find out, because I'm not gonna stop till it's done, I'm not. If it takes the last breath of my body, I'm not. I know it's a lot of environmental issues, but it should have never been environmental issues if they had been taken care from the very beginning. This has been procrastinated on for years. And no, Andy, you weren't here when it happened, but we need to do something. No, you weren't here when this process came, when this came in, you weren't here, no, you weren't. But I've been here long enough to know that something should have been done, and something should be done. We put mandates on stuff, and we sugarcoated stuff that we shouldn't be doing, and that's just bottom line. And I've said my, my piece. You can, go ahead.
Just for, to be on the record, um, in the schedule A that's attached to the ordinance, uh, the decrease of funding for the North Prong Park of nineteen thirty-five is actually going to be applied for Lot Five, so it's not going directly to the, uh, it's going to cycle remediation for the part of ninety-five.
And that makes it better?
You just ask them to work with.
Yeah, but um, still, it makes it better, it doesn't make it any better for me. Because our money is being allocated to certain projects, and it's not being allocated to where it really should be. This is a long-going on project that should have been, it should be halfway done, if not all the way done. And we're procrastinating. I'm not gonna say just me, you, me, and we're procrastinating. I've been on this council long enough, it's procrastinating, no, I'm not, no, mm-mm, I'm, 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 mm-mm. Something's gotta be done. When I'm looking at this and I'm seeing you pulling money from this to do this, no, I, I'm not happy, and I shouldn't be happy, no, mm-mm, mm-mm. I'm here to stand in proxy of my district, I'm here to stand in proxy for my city, and I'm not happy with this, it brings tears to my eyes. It brings tears to my eyes. I've seen this for over how many years, forty, forty years, I've seen this. I've seen this happening, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not happy with this at all, no, no. Any more questions or comments, because I've said my piece.
This is the first reading, is that, that's correct, it's the first reading. I know we've talked about it, um, I'm wondering if this would be a time to table and, and revisit. But then, what does that mean going forward, like what's the, what's the extra piece?
So here's an opportunity, so if we're looking at pay-go funds, nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, modified, and that project account, we can, uh, look within our funding if there's any other projects that have additional discretionary funds from, so if they're longer needed. The funding is wrapped up, so if you're able to, um, that could, usually with compliance, the Lot Five. So this is what happens, we have a Lot Five budget, uh, reading, that would have a different, um, scale related that would, we're wanting for different accounts, and we would have to identify a funding. Um, you could also set up a whole different project, you could also go for a surplus. Um, so if you're, um, we're, we're, if we can't identify in a different project, you can also just pull it from surplus and use it for projects forward. So a couple of the different options to be considered then, um, to roll along.
I, I, I agree with Angela there, it'd be, yeah, and following people's comments, it'd be nice to see if there's another avenue.
Yeah, it's gotta be another way, it's, it has to be, I, I'm just, I'm telling y'all, I'm in, I'm living right now, I'm really upset.
I, I just will say, I don't want this to come from surplus, so I'd rather us fi- find another solution, but the last thing I'd like to see us do is pull this from surplus.
I don't want to see it come from, um, surplus even, but I, um, the way things are going, I mean, to me, it seems as though there, the money's coming from mostly everything that should be done in certain districts that's not being done, so I'm, I'm just like, I've, I've just, I don't know, I'm, I'm emotional right now, and I shouldn't be, no, I should be, I should be, because this is my district, this is what I represent, this is the district I represent, and I also, like I said, I represent the city, and I'm speaking on not only that, that district's behalf, but I'm speaking on the city's behalf.
So I think we're gonna table it, and then revisit possible other options, and yeah.
It's tabled.
Would you like us to bring back for first reading or schedule, bring back to the work session?
Work session.
Bring him back to the work session.
I'd like to have a conversation with the, the council.
Yeah, yeah, and the work. But I think, I think getting an update on what's going on with the North Prong Park could be a good idea as well. I don't know what, uh.
So with this, um, ordinance twenty-eight, thirty-one will be tabled until our next work, work session?
Yeah, it's correct.
For, for further discussion.
Yep.
We can have it ready next Monday.
Okay.
It's not.
Okay.
Things ready.
I have, uh, somebody here to help with it.
Okay, so, there's no problem in this, okay. Um, could I get a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty-eight, thirty-two for first reading?
So moved, second. Ordinance number twenty-eight, thirty-two, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Transit Administration for the feasibility study of fixed and flexed route transit services and approving an amendment of the FY twenty-four budget to allocate said funds for the purpose of implementation. Whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Transit Administration has a statewide transit innovation grant, which provides funding to support and expedite projects improving transit service in the state. And whereas the city has applied for STIG grant from Maryland Department of Transportation, the Maryland Transit Administration, to provide funding for a feasibility study and planning of citywide fixed and flexed route service to improve transit connectivity throughout the city. And whereas M dot MTA has awarded a grant in the total amount of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars to provide for the aforementioned project, provided it is accompanied by a city match of nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And whereas the city shall accept the grant in a form of reimbursements and transfer those funds from the M dot reimbursement account. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of council. Section one of ordinance twenty-eight, thirty-two reads, acting mayor John R. Heath on behalf of the city is hereby authorized to enter into the attached grant agreements accepting grant funds in the amount of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars from the Maryland Department of Transportation to provide for the feasibility study as outlined above, and accepting project term and definition of matching funds in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. And the city finance department is further authorized to transfer any said grant funds, grant funds received in the form of reimbursement to the appropriate accounts. Section two, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows, increase M dot grant revenue account one-zero-five-zero-zero dash four-two-five-eight-zero-five X X X X X by seventy-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. Increase grant match revenue account one-zero-five-zero-zero dash four-nine-nine-zero-zero-zero dash X X X X X by nineteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Increase design grant expense account one-zero-five-zero-zero dash five-one-three-zero-two-zero dash X X X X X by ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. Section three, the city of Salisbury's FY twenty-four general fund budget is hereby amended as follows, increase revenue account zero-one-zero-zero dash four-six-nine-eight-one-zero, use of surplus by nineteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. An increase expense account nine-one-zero-zero-one dash five-nine-nine-one-three-one, grant match DID by nineteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars.
Any questions or comments on this ordinance?
Angela?
I do, um, I just wanted, you know, to mention surplus again, so basically, our match is coming out of surplus. Um, where does that leave us in surplus and our, our bond rating, or does that impact that? It's only, it looks like it's, it's under twenty thousand dollars, but I just still want to make sure that.
It's not affected you, there's any sort of pre-deal, our surplus, depending on days, it'll be ten to eleven million dollars. Twenty thousand dollars actually removed, um, the bond rate.
Any other questions or comments in the council?
I think we all know that transportation's the biggest issue that we face, hurdles for our residents. Um, so I'm excited to see that we've, we're working to move forward with these, accepting these grant funds and identifying some avenues for our residents.
Yeah, and then people will have to ride the bird's feet of. Okay, um, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty-eight, thirty-two for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, vote is four to zero. Um, we will now have public comments.